Zoning Commission's special meeting of November 2nd. Can you hear me? Kevin, can you hear me? Okay. Couple of comments. One, this is a special meeting. We are constrained to only the agenda items that are on the agenda. And appointment of Aldrin, this is the first item. And we have Ann Erickson who's missing. Let's see, Tucker, why don't you sit for a while? We have a good young guy in a zoning commission meeting. Okay, we have three public hearings tonight. Two of them have to do with special exceptions for service of alcohol at locations within town. The third one is to consider a text amendment to our zoning regulations to extend the cannabis moratorium that we put in effect last November. And the purpose of that is to give us time to, should we vote for it, to give us time to fashion the rest of the regulation for cannabis. In the public hearings tonight, please comment on the substance of the public hearing. The discussion of cannabis retail and use, which is the subject of the meeting, public hearing on the 19th, will give you the opportunity then to weigh in on whether or not retail is here, there, or everywhere. Tonight is just to discuss whether or not we should have a moratorium or not.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
21st.
21st, okay. I got it in my mind, the 91st, the 19th. Anyway, so the first order of business is the public hearing 2228 of Sarah Bisak. Bisaki, how do you say it?
Bisaki.
Bisaki, okay. I'm sorry, it's the wrong one. For a special, I will read it, for special exception pursuant to section 8.6 of the Simmsbury zoning regulations for beer and wine liquor permit on the property located at 776 Hot Meadow Street, Cessers Map G10, Block 205, Lot 007, Zone SC. Okay. Does the applicant want to tell us what you plan?
Yes, I, so I'm here on behalf of my wife.
Pardon? Oh, yes. Can you come up to the podium? I'm sorry. We don't normally use this venue, so, and the way it's arranged is a little odd tonight with our backs to the audience. Kevin, our vice chairman, is up here on the screen remotely. He can hear us, right Kevin? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. Here on behalf of my wife, both my wife and I own the building at 776 Hot Meadow Street.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can you just introduce yourself?
I apologize.
Sorry, I know, sorry. We're throwing all this at you.
Certainly. My name is Kent Bisaki. Sarah Bisaki is my wife. And so, co-owners of the property at 760 Hot Meadow Street. My wife is a coach, by that I mean, a business and a health coach. And to extend her practice, the bottom level, pardon me, of the property will be used as a creative venue, a place where she can hold her small retreats, wear creative classes, speakers, book talks, and the like. And so, the application asks for the ability to sell beer and wine at the venue.
Okay. And questions of the commissioners?
Anticipated hours of operation? And hours for sale of beer and wine if you're...
It's the anticipated hours, yes. I know we're looking at between the hours of... Sorry, I'm going from memory and I'm representing my wife.
Yes.
Ms. Bisaki put the hours in her narrative and they're also on the staff report at the bottom of the application.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
If you would.
Start. They close on Mondays, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Tuesday through Thursday, 8:00 AM through 9:00 PM, Friday through Saturday, and then 5:00, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sunday.
Okay, thank you. Any other pertinent things that the staff report says that we should hear? In public?
A positive recommendation.
Okay, well, that will come later when we consider the application itself. Bruce, any other?
Well, just two things. This thing speaks to an ADA bathroom, ADA compliant bathroom. But it isn't clear whether it's being proposed and it's going to be built in the next few weeks, the next few months, or it's a blue-sky thing. Someday when you...
We're in the middle of renovations right now.
And does the renovation include that?
Yes.
ADA handicap?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then my other question is, on the front, the drawing we were given has tables outside, not on the front step, but out in the area between the sidewalk and the front step.
Yes.
Some of which is within the property that you own and some of those tables are not. And I guess I'm not clear, you're looking for service of alcohol, of beer and wine outdoors in addition to indoors?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Staff made the plan aware of this and she has agreed to revise her plans about the tables located outside of the property will not be part of the approved plan. And so you can condition that as well, just to ensure, but staff had made her aware of that already.
So we're also being, we're being asked to approve outdoor service for beer and wine.
No, I think the staff report says that, has that been removed or not? Well, it will be. Anyway, this is a public comment on it, so that's a good comment. We'll take up the deliberation when we consider the application later. Any other comments from the commissioners?
As a Nazi commissioner, may I ask questions?
Sure.
The staff report indicates that you had made a prior application when the plan was to have a second grist mill and we granted a special exception at that time. But this is a very different proposed business, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so the prior special exception was for a bookstore, correct?
Right.
And this is for alcohol with a life coaching business and outside liquor service?
Correct.
Okay, so it's very, it's very different.
Okay, and it's a different location.
Yeah.
Remember, the special exception goes with the property.
Right.
Just say a bookstore.
Yeah.
But this is classes and workshops and retreats. Author talks, book clubs.
Yeah, see, I thought the same thing. I thought this was just the one at the grist mill just moving here instead. That was kind of what the description was.
A portion of, we are looking at a portion of that involving books and the like, but that's a different location.
Oh, okay.
Is it staying at the, is the thing at the grist mill staying there or...
I don't know anything about the grist mill.
No.
Okay, so but you are just doing life coaching and events?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions on the kinds of events?
Yeah, I'd like to make kind of the...
Yes.
So while that applicant, or that plan for grist mill is dead, the approval still exists. So that property does have a liquor license.
Yep.
For the property.
Yep.
So that doesn't change. Because one of my concerns is that I think I was hoping that we wouldn't get another request until we were pretty confirmed that this was going to be the location, because otherwise each time we approved it, it doesn't, you know, our approval doesn't stop just because you moved your business. But are you saying that you now own this building?
So I think the confusion is, has me connected with the grist mill, which I'm not connected to that.
I think the confusion is that staff, this report says that in similar application...
It's just moving locations.
Right.
And it's just moving locations.
Right.
This sounds like a totally different building and it's not just moving locations and it's a totally different business, part of it.
Right, right. So the, at Hot Meadow, it will be the coaching venue and we are looking at another portion of that having a bookstore as well.
Do you own this property?
Yes.
Hot Meadow?
The Hot Meadow property, yes.
That was one of Kevin's questions.
I'm sorry, I was confused by the question. Yes, we do own, myself and my wife do own 760, 776 Hot Meadow Street.
Okay, so this is not the same book business that was going to the grist mill?
It is, it is, it is...
So you're not seeing our stuff, but our stuff basically implied that you just picked that up and moved it here, so now we're all a little confused, that's why.
I understand, I understand. I think, to make that clear, there will be, that book business at the grist mill, I think is what you mentioned. It will take a portion of our downstairs. Does that clear, does that make sense?
Yeah.
No.
If we view it as a split, split, so part of the space will be the creative venue, part of the space will be the bookstore.
Okay, but it will, the entire business will be here, it won't be between here and grist mill?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
There's nothing left at grist mill?
Nothing left, to my knowledge.
Yeah, okay.
I can only talk about Hot Meadow in terms of that, yes.
And is it one open space with the creative venue and the bookstore, shop falling together? Or are they separate?
So we're looking, we're looking at separating.
Separated, yes, okay.
And there's, there's no description of the second floor use? There's no diagram of it?
Residential.
Okay.
Staff has this description in your application. Do you have that?
Yes.
Everybody has that? They're planning to open a bookshop featuring new and used books for both adults and children. Will also be holding community events such as author talks and signings, group seminars, book clubs, storytimes, as well as acting as an important third space for people to gather socially outside of their homes. I don't know, I don't see anything here about life coaching.
Right. It's in here, and retreats. Can I ask when this was added? Because I didn't see this in the drop box today.
No, you need to...
I was there today at like 3:30. I got it today. And it does say, in addition to book signings, this is various workshop and classes, small retreats. And then in parentheses, she says, "I am a life coach and I will host my life coaching, small slash intimate events here."
Okay, this is not the same that they're reading.
This is September 23rd, this one's September 29th. She's giving the ball, the point is, she's just saying that it's a safe business.
This one, this one is a later submission. So if you have the typewritten one, that's the later submission. Any further questions in the commission?
I have one more. Did you consider getting this business rolling before applying for a liquor permit? I'm sure others are as uneasy as I am that we approve this and you decide you're not going to do this one either. Now we've loaded two approvals. The two sites are then approved forever for beer and wine permits because we were sympathetic to your suggestion of an attractive business that was very attractive at one of the grist mill, but it's not there. We gave up on that one. The difference here is you own the building, but it's a commercial space that I suspect could be used for other things. And once it has a beer and wine permit attached to it, I don't know what you might do with it. You probably thought of that, but, yeah. Small businesses tend to have difficulty in the first couple of years and beyond.
Sure, sure.
Have you thought about what you're going to do with it if the business isn't successful?
Do you mind rephrasing your question? I'm always thinking of that. We're always thinking of the future, yes, so... You're asking what we would do with the space in the event of failure?
I asked you if you thought much about that, but I withdrew the question.
Okay, any other comments? The purpose of this is to clarify what they're asking for. And I'm not sure that we've done totally a good job there.
I do have one other question. When do you anticipate opening?
Looking in the springtime.
Okay. Any more questions from the commissioners, yes?
Question for staff.
Yes.
Is this something, an application that could be subject to their business opening? For the permit?
No.
Okay.
No, when you, when you vote on a special exception, it goes with that property. It's filed in the land records. And whether they're there or not, whoever owns that building has that right.
That's my point. Okay.
Right.
Thanks, Lawrence.
Mr. Chairman, procedures?
Yes.
Is it possible to table something like this?
We are in a public hearing. We want to hear what people have to say. We're going to act on the application after the public hearing is closed. So that's the point at which those kinds of comments can be made. Anybody from the audience care to speak to this application? Mr. Richmond, would you come up to the... And state your name and address, please?
Good evening, my name's David Richmond. We own 760 Hot Meadow Street. We've now owned it for seven and a half years. I find it ironic that the neighbor, our building is right next door, that our neighbor who purchased this building never once called us and said, "Hey, we're thinking of getting a beer and wine permit." And my concern is, there's no parking. It's street parking. Okay, my office is in 760 Hot Meadow. I'm on this road 20 times a day. The coffee spot, we put walkways in. I've watched 20 people a week almost get hit by cars because they don't follow the directions of crossing in the walk. They're going to park in our parking lot. It's going to happen, okay? Which, it's private property. So that means that we're going to have to enforce parking rules with our neighbors. We spoke to the neighbor on the right who owns the apartments and I've talked to the Weldon Building. We have enough trouble with the parking there with our tenants. Our buildings are full. So our parking lots lit up. Tonight, when you leave, drive by this building, see how dark it is. So when I go to my car every day and I park right in front of our building, literally, you have to look three ways to get into your vehicle because the traffic is fast, lots of trucks, and it stops a lot because there's stop signs there and people are always going down Station Street the wrong way, which they're thinking of making a two-way street. So the idea of, and I'm pro-business. I'm on the chamber, I'm chairman of government affairs. I'm very active in town, pay a lot of taxes. We just finished building the self-storage facility in Weetalk. The concern I have is not the beer and wine permit, but what happens when you, when you provide a beer and wine permit, someone goes in there, has two or three glasses of wine and walks out on Hot Meadow Street because there's no private parking lot. And then what's going to happen is there's going to be problems. There already is problems with people dumping garbage after the concerts. Our dumpster fills to the top. We can't police it. So it's, it's, I'm not in favor of this. I think it's going to add a lot of problems to the area because even with, I just learned about the outside tables tonight. So I'm going to have my professional office space next door and there are going to be people out in front drinking wine and drinking beer at 5 o'clock. We're in that building to 8 or 9 o'clock at night. So I think it's the wrong use or the wrong permit for the location. If it was at Grist Mill, which I actually used to own, there's a parking lot. There's a private parking lot for people to park. So along this road, I don't think there's another establishment that serves wine and beer that doesn't have a private parking lot on the premises. Joe's Pizza has parking in the rear. So there's no parking. And when you go up and down this road, and I ask everybody to take a look during the day and during the night, it's not safe. And so, someone going to watch or listen to a book reading with their little kids runs out, those kids are now on that road. When Vincent's Sport Shop was there, people were in and out. That wasn't like you went and shopped and spent an hour. The average person was there 15 minutes to get their skates or their jerseys. So my partners and I strongly ask you to deny this application for the safety of our residents, the beauty of our streets, and do we really want people drinking across, you know, on our main road here? It's not like having a cup of coffee. The other thing is, ask the lady that owns the coffee spot all the trouble people have crossing that road every day. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, anyone else care to speak to this application? Yes, ma'am? Can you state your name and address?
Ronnie Project on Brooklands. Is the application to just serve liquor or to sell it? Is it to serve it during certain events?
To be able to serve...
Excuse me, address the chair, please. The application is to sell it and serve it. That's, that's the liquor license. Any other questions? Can we pause for a moment? Anne, do you want to take your place?
It's okay. I'll be here soon as I could.
The commissioner who has arrived, so there is a spot up here for you if you want to come replace poor Tucker who almost got the vote. Right here. Okay. Anyone else have a comment or question on this application? Sorry?
In the back?
Yes?
I have a question on the application.
Yes.
When you actually sixteen, I'm trying to make sure. I just want to kind of, just for people listening and trying to know what they're going to decide on, what's out on the website only talks about the bookstore at 776 and all that information, so it didn't match up to what this gentleman was thinking. So, because as a resident, I'm just kind of confused by what the public hearing is about.
Well, the public hearing notice puts the summary of it on the public hearing. There is an application that is available to everyone.
Yeah, I was looking at the two on the tonight's meeting and they're only talking about studying how the bookstore works and bookstore proposal and reopening a bookstore and then, you know, the Xera and all that. So I'm just saying it doesn't matter what I was hearing, the concept.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Any other comments? Commissioners have any other comments?
Do you have a question? So there is, this property owes no parking?
That's correct.
Okay, so the business owner, what are they expecting their people, their customers to park?
Have you arranged with any of the neighbors to park cars?
Not yet, sir.
Okay, they have not yet considered that. Okay, the question before the commission will be, should we close this public hearing or should we continue it to our next meeting?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Diane? Okay, an application, yeah. Okay, we close this public hearing, then we can address it and we can vote on it tonight or we could, we could defer it. But that's the choices in front of us. Any more comments on closing the public hearing? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Where, oh. You voted aye, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, we close the public hearing. Thank you very much. All right, the next public hearing is application 22-30 of Legends Hall LLC, Lessee BMW Sports LLC applicant, Adam Westever, agent for a special exception pursuant to eight points, section 8.6 of the Simmsbury zoning regulations for a beer and wine permit at the property located at 1375 Hot Meadow Street, Cessers Map 105, Block 403, Lot 15A, Zone I-1. This is, of course, the skating center. Okay, you want to come and tell us what you'd like? Name and address, please.
Do I press the button or...
Is it green?
Yeah. I'm good. My name's Adam Westever. I'm representing Legends Hall. This is Kelly Beckensale, business partner with me. We don't own a bookstore. Well, we're not associated with the grist mill, so just to clarify that. I think if you, we have, I think everybody here, or if you've been in town, may have heard that the Connecticut Whale is coming to town. We've worked very hard to get that in place. And one of the things that we're requesting on our end is to obtain a liquor permit to serve beer and wine upstairs. I think there's a diagram that's upstairs in the cafe. And then later today, we put out a pavilion area for people to sit at picnic tables, which is on the outdoor on the corner right there. It's, we've got some arbivites out there. We'll have some sort of structure separating it from the outside and the public, so to speak. But if you go back to the previous page, that's the upstairs venue that is Legends Hall. And then I think if we scroll through, there's the picture with the cafe down there. And there's a cafe on the first floor. Might be missing, I think it was in one of the original documents that was there. That was submitted.
Only added photos of the photos we added today.
Oh, okay, so there was, that was a, the previous submission had photos with... Do you want a copy of that for the submission?
Yeah, I think we have had that.
Yeah, we're sent over to George. But we're very excited, we're looking forward to it and respectfully ask for a liquor permit to serve beer and wine at this venue.
No, that's fine.
Plenty of parking.
Okay, now you said that when you were serving, there would be times when you're serving outside.
Correct.
Do you know when that is, or...
Probably during the hockey games or at different venues or special events, we'll have something out there. We're setting up a picnic area, so if you can see the tables that are out front right now, we're moving those into that back area. We've had a lot of requests from parents and other individuals to have an area where they can sit outside, enjoy the sun when you have a nice sunny day like today. We're looking to potentially put in a fire pit. We'll have to talk to the marshal and I'm sure we may be up here again when we request a fire pit at some point in time. But for now, we're looking to just set up an area where we can have a pavilion where people can enjoy the outdoors and have a sandwich and something to drink.
Thank you. Commissioners?
So this would be every day, daily, during the day, or evenings, or...
It would be evenings. I think we're going to, we're, so we're going to request from noon time until 11:00 PM at night for operations because you're going to be upstairs, you're going to be downstairs. There are going to be hockey games that are going to be going on. You'll have the whale there, you'll have other semi-pro teams playing there, you'll have the high school, you'll have different venues going on and playing. So a lot of the parents are very excited about...
They're looking forward to it.
They're looking forward to it.
Yeah.
And so you're, you're going, it's your intention to serve beer and wine outside your building, too?
Correct, yes, yes, at that one location, yes.
Which one?
And is that between your structure and Big Y, or is that...
Nope, that's on the back side, on the front side. You'll walk into the building, it's right to the right.
Okay, and so you're anticipating doing beer and wine from noon to 11:00, seven days a week?
Correct, we have determined... We haven't determined the full time, so I don't think I'm gonna be out there until eleven o'clock at night.
And how do you get to that space? Some of the, how do you get to that space, the outdoor space?
If you see that little walkway right there, so we've closed off the backside and you have the Arvitaides in the front, those aren't there right now, we're going to be building them if we get approved to put this out there. So, we're gonna create a little area for that. So, it's closed off from the parking lot, it's closed off. We took into account the neighbors in the back, took that into consideration, when we took the Big Y into consideration and tried to keep it in an area where it's, it's small enough, yet it offers something that the people have been asking for.
So, is that against the rear parking lot area?
Nope, right when you walk inside.
In the front, really?
If you see the, yeah, so, this is the building, the front entrance.
Yeah, oh, I thought you misspoke. I was thinking it was in the back, okay.
Right front of the door.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so, right in the front parking lot.
Okay, and so, there's not gonna be an actual, will there be actual concessions outside or people can just take their stuff and go outside?
We'll probably have an area set up with a cooler.
Okay.
That will serve a can of beer and a can of wine or something like that. And we'll probably have a hot dog and hamburgers, like a grill or a pizza area or something like that.
Okay.
Or sandwiches from it.
Yeah, sandwich, something like that. If somebody wants to go outside and they want to go sit down, they're not sitting out in the front lot area right there. They're often an area that's sort of discreet and away from everybody else.
Yeah, I will just go on record as a former hockey mom for many, many, many years. This is very, this is, A, it's on par with a lot of facilities, similar facilities. They often, they also have a liquor license. And B, there was never any place to sit except for like cramming in that little concession area.
Exactly. The predecessors of the place wanted people in and out. And we're looking to have people come in, enjoy the area. We're trying to create an atmosphere of, again, this goes all the way out to the hockey people, a Greenwich or a New Canaan where they have the outdoor arenas, they have the nice areas to hang out and sit. And it's, I've been there many times and it's quite enjoyable and that's what we're trying to bring to Simsbury.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea.
Any other questions of the commission?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Kevin?
So, in the site plan at all, do we have anything that designates exactly where the serving of liquor or wine and beer will occur? Does that, I think they have it, do you think that?
Yes.
When they go to the state, will they be limiting it to this area?
So, when we go to the state, we'll have to apply for another permit again. And then, that permit, we'll have to call out the area where we'll be serving the liquor. So, we'll have to have a plan that designates the area that's, we're showing on the picture right here. And the state, again, after this, if we're fortunate enough to pass through here, we'll have to go through the state and then they'll have to render their decision.
Right, but they do it based on our approval.
Yes, correct.
But, we need to know what we are approving.
Correct. And then, we'll have the same format that we're presenting to the state and it will show the location of the outdoor area, the pavilion. It will show the Legends Hall and it will show downstairs in the first floor of the cafe.
Does that show on the, excuse me for a second, does that show on the application?
Yes.
Savannah?
The site plan.
I see the map.
The site plan might be a little confusing.
Yeah.
And we can make a better site plan.
Yeah, it includes.
Pardon?
It includes the grocery store.
Yeah, but does it designate where the liquor's being served?
I think it does.
The pictures do.
The pictures do.
Oh.
Yeah, but the pictures are not a site plan.
The writing's so small, I'm not sure. I have my magnifying glass with me.
Yes.
It is not identified on the site plan that we have, that is in the photos.
Yes.
But, it can't be added to the site plan.
But, it's not on the site plan as it's presented to us at the moment.
Could you repeat the places again? It's Legends Hall.
Legends Hall.
It's the first floor cafe.
Legends Hall on the second floor. So, if you go upstairs on the second floor, we have an area designated as Legends Hall and you can walk up the stairs and this is the area.
Go ahead.
Right in here.
Yeah.
And then, if you walk into the facility and you go straight in, there's a cafe on the first floor. And we'll serve it in that area as well. And then, also outside in that pavilion. And I can give you an updated plan if that's confusing on your end. We'll provide an updated plan for you. And we can submit the same one to you that we're going to submit to the state.
Can we, can we put up the site plan and have him point to it?
Sure.
Well, he's unsure.
Yeah.
The chart's easy.
She's looking at me like, oh, yeah. Yeah, right. But she can drop.
The site plan's not a good site plan, so that's the reason why we put the pictures in there to sort of give you a better description.
I mean, it's a decent site plan.
And the pictures are very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We turned out our page. Everyone turn around.
Is there a Dropbox?
She's trying to log in.
Oh, she's making her login.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sure don't. I have to put the site plan.
Well, whilst she's doing that, I'm curious, when you say pavilion, is there gonna be like anything to cover it or is it just gonna be open air tables?
Potentially. Yeah, potentially. It's, we're going one step at a time.
Okay.
And approximately, how many people will that accommodate in the outside area?
I think we have one, two. It's a forty by forty-five area, so I think we have twelve tables, picnic tables that we'll put in there and each table seats about four people.
Okay, and what about people who can't get a table? Are they unable to just stand?
We probably won't allow anybody in there if they can't sit down. You know, there'll probably be an area where you can sit and there's gonna be the fire pit area. But, I don't think, I don't think you'll have, you know, you're not gonna flood with people in there. You'll also have people inside as well.
Thank you.
At the risk of sort of overtones.
Yeah.
What I see when I look at the west side of your building on the site plan.
You see the Big Y.
It's a parking lot.
No, it's on the other side. It's on the Big Y side.
I can point, I'll point it out to you if you want me to.
Well, it's right there.
There we go, behind there.
There we go.
Sorry.
Okay, so, this is the front of the building. Where you come in.
Their face is north, right?
Face is north. So, you have the empty fields up on the other side. These are all our parking areas around. This cutout right here. Where?
Sorry, I wanna.
So, this is going to be the pavilion area. So, we've put in Arvitaides all the way down here, coming along, and then we have a little entranceway right over here. Inside the building on the second floor is Legends Hall and it's right approximately in this existing area here. The cafe is up towards the front, it's right below it on the first floor.
So, you're going out the front door to get to it?
Yes.
Okay.
You walk up the front door.
Okay, now we see where it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll see you, Bruce.
I got it, thank you.
Now, the dimensions of that you mentioned, how many? What are, what are the dimensions?
It's, I can put the dimensions on there as well. We did submit something that had the locations picked out, so, and there was a couple of iterations back and forth, so it may have gotten lost in the iteration. So, I can look to see what I can find, because we did send something over to George.
You did say what the, how many feet it were, that was what I was asking.
Again, I'm just going off, it's, I think it's forty feet this way and about forty-five to fifty out this way. So, it's roughly forty-five by fifty, fifty-five area.
Okay. More questions by the commissioners? Does anyone from the public wish to speak to this application? Yes, sir?
My name is Todd Thirty-Four on Brook Lane. Just wondering how would the ID check and process work in this kind of venue that's open?
Same way as any other venue. You'll have, you'll have to, if you are, you know, you have to present your ID and that's standard. Everybody will be tipped, they call it tips, or certified for the service. So, they'll all go through their alcohol and beverage program, so they'll, you know, they'll know how to, you know, ask for that, they'll know how to check for people if they've had too much to drink, you know, we're gonna serve low volume alcohol. Again, we're not serving liquor, we're serving wine and beer. So, we're very cognizant of that.
So, there'll be somebody out there?
Yes, at all times.
To keep somebody from walking off.
At all, at all, yeah, exactly.
Offsite.
All times, yes. If, and if there's nobody out there, it's not gonna be over. You know, or there won't be any liquor or anything out there.
Anyone else? Yes, Sharon?
Sharon Thomas, forty-two Breckwood Drive. So, how will, how will you control people walking off and saying, I'm coming up, I'm hanging outside and then leaving with an open can of beer?
You can't, you can't leave with an open can of beer.
You're gonna control it?
We're gonna control that, yes. That's, it's, and that's why we have the separation. You know, we have to separate it from having somebody walking out and walking around. We don't want, we don't want that. We're trying to control people from walking around the parking lot and doing any of those activities. We're trying to cut out the old habits.
And then, the last question is, you mentioned, well, Dave, I guess I should be controlling you.
Yes.
There was mention that the hours were gonna be twelve to eleven, seven days a week.
That's what I heard.
Right. So, I'm gonna ask this, I don't know if it's proper, but does it have to be approved for that, for that?
Yes, our, their application states when they're, when they'll be open.
Right, but is that, does that have to be approved for that? Can, can the approval come with modified hours from what they request?
It could, yes. Any other comments in this application from the public? Hearing none? Kevin, I'm sorry, I got my back to you.
I heard your vote being, it was open till noon and I was just worried about the, the parent that has to take their kid in for five o'clock in the morning.
No blood in your eyes.
I have to practice and then he's up here.
Yeah, the Mite program, they're out of luck.
Can you call them?
And I don't, is late enough at night, I don't know how late the games will go?
The games, most of the games are going to be in the afternoon, but you do have occasional men's leagues that play at night. And we want to give them the opportunity to relax and, you know, have a drink after the games and then be able to go home.
All right, and all the clock goes up?
Yes, some of the games start at nine, nine, nine-thirty and then we're, you know, gotta cut them out. I like to be in bed by ten myself, so.
Play running time after ten-thirty.
Play running time after nine o'clock.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the audience or the staff or the commission? Okay, do I hear a motion that we should close this public hearing?
I'll move.
Diane, yes?
I'll move that we close application Z C twenty-two dash thirty. Is that the right one?
Okay.
Yes.
Second by Donna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote or?
You can vote, you're, you replaced him.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yes, okay. Kevin?
Yes, I voted aye.
Okay, so the motion carries six, nothing. This public hearing is closed. Okay.
Sorry, I'm just gonna say that.
All right, the next public hearing is application twenty-two dash thirty-three of the Simsbury Zoning Commission. Applicant George McGregor, agent for a text amendment to section two point six of the zoning regulations to extend the cannabis moratorium. As you know, we have a moratorium in place that expires on November eighth, I believe, that we put in place last year, thinking that we would have time to fashion a regulation. The state has enabled cannabis sales statewide and unless we make a regulation controlling it here in Simsbury, it is, retail is to be treated like a normal retail operation in the, in any zoning regulation. And so, we want to preserve our right to make a regulation that controls it more tightly than the state. And that's the purpose of establishing this mor, or continuing this moratorium for a period, I think it was six months in our application. Comments from the commissioners? We've already voted on this once, it's a matter of extending it. People in the public want to speak to this application? Yes, sir?
Paul McKenna, Simsbury resident. I'm interested as to how you chose, or if it was even this commission that chose only six months as the timeline that the moratorium before decision would be made. Is that from state guidance? And secondarily, in the newspaper I read that we can be in a bind if somebody opens up in Simsbury. I may have misunderstood it, if you could speak to that.
Yeah.
If somebody opens up a retail shop during the moratorium, could you explain that, Sharon?
Yeah, the, nobody can apply for a cannabis retail operation as long as the moratorium is in place, okay? We have planned to extend it for six months because we think that will give us adequate time to complete the discussion of the regulation that we've written now. And we're gonna have a public hearing on it on the twenty-first, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, after that, we can continue the public hearing for more public input, should we choose, depending on how people respond. And then, at some point, we're gonna stop and revise the regulation in accordance with the things that we've heard and vote to establish or not establish that regulation. If we choose not to establish a regulation, then the state rules apply. But, the state rules don't apply until our moratorium expires or we establish a regulation.
Thank you. We've already had a moratorium for one year and the six months is the maximum to have six more months.
Eighteen months is the maximum. We did six, twelve months already and we need.
We did twelve months. Yes, sir?
Chris Gex.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Simsbury resident, and I just wanna know, why do you think another six months, you can accomplish what you didn't accomplish in a year?
You're entitled to make that comment. This is not a debate. This is a public hearing. You can ask questions, but we, we're not in a debate or rationalization of why we did whatever we did. You can say we're good, we're bad, we're different, or I don't think you can do it, but that's it. Sorry.
Okay, let me ask the question differently.
Can I name and address, please?
David Johnson, twenty-one St. Louis Chase. We talk three zero six zero.
Thank you.
What are you gonna do in the next six months that was not done in prior twelve months? What is this moratorium for, from your perspective?
It gives us time to, to finish our regulation.
Okay, so, getting back to what the lady asked, that didn't happen in the past twelve months. Is that what you're saying? And what regulation are we talking about? What, what, what new regulations, what regulations at all are you gonna put in place?
Well, there's a, there's a public hearing, excuse me, there's a public hearing posted for the twenty-first, which has a proposed zoning regulation. Okay? And that's what we're going to discuss at that time. And subsequent to the public hearing, we're then going to modify, edit, whatever, and probably pass a zoning regulation with respect to cannabis.
And may I ask, what is the current zoning stipulation that you're considering?
I don't understand your question.
I think he wants to, he wants to know.
What?
He wants to know what the regulation is that we're considering. But, that's what we're doing.
It's not a public, it's, it's a public document. It's available.
There's no conversation of what the actual regulations are until it's.
That's.
We've discussed it in prior meetings.
That's the subject of the twenty-first.
What did we all discuss?
Well, I'm just saying, it's been, it's been recorded in all the prior meetings that we've done and we're going to present it to the town next on the twenty-first and then have the discussion at that time. I don't think we have the wording on it at this moment.
Well, the wording exists, it's in the public domain, but that's not the purpose here. We're discussing. We're discussing the moratorium, whether we do it or not. The option is, if we don't do it, the state rules apply immediately, and someone could apply for cannabis retail in Simsbury.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Anywhere.
One more question?
Uh, no, on the eighth.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
In town, correct?
Pardon?
They can apply anywhere in town, correct?
They could apply anyplace that retail is allowed.
Yep.
Okay, one more question. Are there any other dispensaries in the Farmington Valley? Would this be their first one in the Farmington Valley?
We don't know that. This, this is not, this is not an inquisition of what we know. This is your comments on, on what we're proposing to take as an action tonight. I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Steve Gex, I live in twelve Wiggins Farm Road. And it seems that the six months you asked them for, you weren't able to accomplish in the year before. And maybe we should go with the state rule. Just because they can apply for a permit anywhere in the town, it doesn't have to be approved anywhere in the town. Yeah, I'll still have control.
We have a regulation, if you meet the...
If they apply, they can just open it up anyways. Do you have any regulations?
Regulations.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, come on, guys, guys, let's not get into a debate with...
Yeah, sorry, I'm gonna...
The existing regulations, if somebody applies for retail operation and they meet all the regulations, then we pretty much have to approve it. We have to come up with a public safety reason why it doesn't work. And if we do something that is off the wall, then the people go to court and we get overturned.
And the state has guideline all their regulations, and in most cases, towns follow state regulations.
No. No, we, we are, the state statute that enabled cannabis sales also gave the towns the right to either ban it or through the, uh...
Restrict it.
Through the Board of Selectmen, actually. Or we can set zoning regulations that control where in town it can be, when it can be open, and so forth. And we are in the process of trying to decide the best answer to that, and we're asking for your input on the twenty-first and subsequent meetings, if that's what happens. Yes, sir?
Hi, Charles Gex, seven Jules Weetag, Simsbury, O six zero.
Weetags, oh, eight-nine. Pardon?
So, uh, here's a question. You say you're talking about different regulations that have been, uh, decreed, presented on the twenty-first, and we can discuss that. But within the discussion, is it just about, um, rules and regs around what's gonna happen? Or does this, does this board have the ability to ban it outright? Or is that a Board of Selectment? Again, if someone, if certain citizens wanted to ban outright, what is the mechanism for that?
There's, there's two ones. One, one is that we can deny it. Okay, we can say, "Not allowed in town." The selectmen can say, "But cannabis is not allowed in town." Or there can be a referendum item to ban cannabis in town. So those are three choices.
Gotcha, okay, thank you, that's helpful. Um, another question is, you're talking six months on this particular moratorium.
That's correct.
Is there a mechanism this evening for perhaps a board member to make a motion to push it out two years? In other words, who is not...
I think we're, we're constrained by the state statutes. And moratoriums. We can go another six months and that's it.
That's our next.
Gotcha.
Good question.
Sir, I reckon they go up to the podium?
Pardon?
They speak, that way we're not turning around, if the speakers go up to the podium?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a follow-up question. You say...
This is not for questions, this is a com, on the proposed...
It's a question, it's a public hearing. Correct, and I'm a member of the public. I would like to know if this moratorium is not extended, it expires on the eighth. Why are we not hearing, having a hearing till the twenty-first?
Good question.
That's a...
Partly because the public hearing on the twenty-first required a renotice, and that was the first time that we could have the public hearing, according to the state statutes with respect to proper noticing. Our moratorium extends, we had to have a special meeting and consider it tonight. In order to extend the moratorium, we have to have that now, before the eighth. That's why it's done. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Elizabeth Peterson, thirty-two Fox Den Road. I just wanted to say that I'm just kind of Joe Average in the town, and I know the answers to every question that people are asking here, because I took the time to do research, treat judge of the planning department, who is extremely helpful, and took a lot of time to talk to me and answer questions. And I'm just really surprised that people have come to this meeting really unprepared. And the people who've been asking questions have already been answered. So I'm just really, I just wanna make that point.
Well, I'm done, that's why I'm here, I'm a bit educated.
Okay. Remember, this public hearing is for public comment on a proposed action. And so, anybody have any more comments on that? Yes, sir?
Uh, my name's Alexander Beatty, fifty-three Seminary Road.
You're petting people.
I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, what wasn't accomplished in a year is gonna get pushed out another six months. And it would've been great if we had these regulations ready. And I'm worried that another town in the Farmington Valley is gonna like pick up on this, and we're gonna lose out on the tax front, so, that's all.
That's correct.
Because it's, you know, people are gonna use cannabis.
Okay. Yes, sir?
So here's a comment, not a question. Comment on studying the words, your moratorium possibly missing out on revenue. The average dispensary does three million a year, uh, the average dispensary does two million in revenues a year. The high end does three million. Soon we get three million. It's three percent on that, it's ninety grand. One extra policeman costs you a hundred and fifty. You're economically upside down, out of the gate. It's not taught by any of the other nonparticular effects. The economics are such that the state has a vested interest in that. This is a comment, this is a comment.
Okay, a comment on the moratorium, not on, bring that back for the twenty-first, please.
A gentleman, a gentleman addressed giving push behind ending the moratorium tomorrow so that we don't miss out on revenues. But that to be factored in to the calculus and not listen to the real math would be a problem on cardboard.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Yes?
Hi, I'm Tucker Sals, um, I'm an alternate, but I'm no longer on the board, so I'm offering testimony as a normal member. I live at eleven Tuntis Place in Terrifield, Simsbury. My comment is, I believe that we have two sections of town where I feel that cannabis sales would be very useful. I think over by the tractor supply in, uh, near Gramby is a good spot, and especially near the old Hoyts Theater or Apple Theater is a good spot, with plenty of parking, plenty of existing, uh, stuff in place for traffic. So that's, that's just, I'm putting that out as a recommendation.
Okay, but that's, that's for the twenty-first, okay?
Isn't this meant to give comment for...
No, on the, on the moratorium, please.
Well, I'm also in favor of extending the moratorium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am an alternate, not seated as a commissioner.
It's okay, it's a public hearing, you can talk.
This is testimony, I'm Melissa Osborne, I live at forty-four Sand Hill Road. And my comment is, by extending the cor, I'm in favor of extending the moratorium because it will, among other things, also give the Board of Selectmen a chance to convene their public hearing and for the polit, one of the, what is considered the major policymaking board of the town, the Board of Selectmen, to weigh in and to also consider cannabis. And I think that their input will be valuable, um, instead of just zoning being the ones considering the policy issues behind cannabis use and cannabis sales and, not use, but sales in Simsbury.
Is that scheduled?
Thank you.
Yes, the twenty-eighth.
The Board of Selectmen, the first selectman is here, as you can tell, it's...
It's November twenty-eighth.
What, oh, November twenty-eighth, is that what you asked?
Yes.
November twenty-eighth, we have a public hearing, you're welcome to come. Six o'clock, I believe it will be here, and we will take input on people's feeling of committing or allowing cannabis in Simsbury.
Okay. Yes? Yes, Cheryl?
Chris.
Chris, I'm sorry, Chris.
Chris Barnett.
Yeah, Chris, sorry.
I would encourage you to extend the moratorium for two reasons. We want to control, yes or no, what we want here in Simsbury and not allow the state to dictate what we have in our town. And I would encourage you during the next six months to look at the model that Ridgefield used when they vetted this very same issue. We, we liken ourselves to that town in a lot of respects, demographically, school-wise. And they did a very thorough job inviting outside, um, people from communities where cannabis exists as retail establishments, so they heard all the different sides. I would encourage you to take for next six months to do that type of due diligence because we want to have, Simsbury wants to have control over what's here. We don't want the state to tell us what you want, what is, what's coming.
Thank you, Chris. David?
The six months doesn't mean you have to wait six months to make a decision, you have up to six months.
Correct.
You could have this done in two months.
That's correct.
Okay, that wasn't clear. So that's, I, I would be very, very extended.
Okay. Sir?
Were there ever prior public forums for this issue?
Sorry, what?
Were there prior public forums, public hearings for this issue?
For cannabis?
Yeah. No.
I don't think so, no.
The commission talked about it, but no, there, this is the first public hearing. We've had several meetings about the cannabis regulations. We haven't had a public hearing on it yet, and there was an error in the public hearing notice, so we had to have a moratorium because it couldn't hold public hearing if you want to.
Okay.
All right, right? That's just a comment, just a comment, I'm not...
All right. Uh, any more comments?
Yeah, well, hopefully this is a controversial, Barry Klein or Bob Woodway, Weetag, Connecticut, oh, six, oh, eight-nine.
Yeah.
Like a question, I noticed that your public hearing meeting is on the twenty-first of November, that's a Monday of a holiday week where a lot of people are traveling. Did you think about moving that outside of that week so that people are gonna be in the area, have a problem moving more of this pay?
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll take them in advisement. We can always, we can always keep the public hearing open.
Yep.
When we were considering the AD, ADUs, the attached dwelling unit last winter, we kept our public hearing open for three weeks or four weeks to encourage...
Comment.
Comments. So, yes?
Didn't materialize.
Pardon?
That didn't materialize.
Well, that's a, you know. Okay. Any more comments? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? This is one we have to close.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
And I'll second.
Donna, second by Ann, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin? Hi, okay. Public hearing is closed, six, nothing, thank you very much. Okay. Next order of business is a consideration of Application twenty-two dash twenty-eight of Sarah Isak?
Isaki, Isak.
Isaki. I already learned how to say that once. Okay. Comments on that application? There's a, a public, do you have a, um, recommendation?
Staff's recommendation was to approve, we see completely apparent, because however, I wonder that staff is also following the narrative that was provided in the application materials. And I said that this was a bookstore in the same use as Grissel. So if that is different, I don't know if this recommendation still stands in the capacity that...
Well, what does the, the application is to be forced, it says something or doesn't say something. Does it say bookstore or not?
Oh, I don't know. There are number sheets in here, does the handwritten stuff count? Does, you know, is that different? I don't know, I didn't send it out.
Okay.
Oh, and there's, oh, here you go.
Well, there's the addition that says...
This is from George, I think George wrote this, his name is...
Yep.
The owner-operator plans to open a bookstore at seven, seven, six, Hot House Street, featuring new, used books for adults and children. There's more to it, if you wanna read it, but...
Yeah.
Yes, that is what staff wrote, based on what we received, which is not consistent with what we heard tonight.
So what would the staff recommendation be, considering what we heard tonight? Something different than what it already is?
I mean, there is a business proposal in the Dropbox that does...
Yeah.
Say...
Well, there's a handwritten one, and then there's a typed one, and says, the handwritten one is more...
Various workshops.
That was not...
Coaching.
So staff, yeah, so, yeah, staff recommendation would be that this is in the S one zone, so when it was just a retail, retail sales is allowed. So there's an additional plan to see that was added for small event centers on June fifteenth, very seventeen, that allows to do sorts of events. So staff's recommendation would be by this scale, this is a, this is a...
Is this, and that gave no consideration to the issue?
Uh, we're asked for a parking.
Obvious.
Yeah. Totally.
This building has no parking.
Yeah, my concern would be that we'd be presented with a parking scenario.
Okay, but they have no, they have no parking.
Right, so what are they proposing? How are they gonna park?
Okay. I think that perhaps we should table this application to see what response they come with, uh, as a...
Right, because I did say they had to talk.
Kevin, any comments?
Um, boss, I am concerned about this application, uh, the fact that it has no parking.
Well, I just suggested that we table it until, uh, the next meeting.
And they're able to use the staff to regulate it.
To see...
I think we gotta start this public hearing. Because at this point, the applicant, although we're already closing to the applicant, can't give us any more information.
But the applicant, to Commissioner Gray's point, if the applicant is eligible to withdraw their application to handle these inconsistencies with staff, it would probably procedurally be the best path forward to renotice and restart this process when all the information has been hashed out, and have a full parking plan, and have a site plan that shows no tables outside of the property values, and things are tightened up.
Well, I, it's always been my impression that the applicant's entitled to action tonight. And if they are willing to suggest they're gonna withdraw and waive that sort of entitlement to action, I don't have a problem with that, I don't know about anybody else, but...
I don't know that they're here.
If they don't, if they don't wanna withdraw.
Oh, he's over there.
Where, oh, there you are. You moved from over there.
Sorry.
Okay, the suggestion is that you, um, withdraw the application.
Or, or we'll act on it.
Or we'll act on it, and if we act on it, I don't know that it's looking positive. To solve the parking issue.
Do we withdraw the application?
If you want to.
Yes.
Okay, do you wanna withdraw the application?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant withdraws the application. We get that in writing, and then this action is moved.
Right, but not to leave the impression that it's only a parking concern. I think there were legitimate comments raised by others around other issues.
Around the other uses.
Crossing the street, you know, et cetera, et cetera, so...
Yes. Okay. Uh, the next application is twenty-two dash thirty of Legends Hall LLC. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, staff recommended a positive motion for that application. Would be the initial, motion, or the initial condition that the applicant should submit a public patient plan, the planning department provide a marginal review and approval. Who's the, they want the plan that shows...
Yeah, we do.
It's the site plan that we just discussed, that the applicant showed you. You can condition that staff receive that plan, and that we make sure that it's consistent with what you told tonight.
Right.
Okay.
And, and what you're saying is, we've seen the site plan, but the site plan doesn't identify the alcohol service areas outside the building.
So you can condition that staff make sure that it's consistent with what you were verbally told tonight, which we're aware of where the site was put ahead.
A forty by forty-five foot area.
Indicated where he pointed his site plan, right.
Where he pointed, I think we all...
The picture showed, yeah.
Any other comments on the application? Any other comments on the application? Somebody want to make a motion about it?
If I could find it, I would. It's here, it's some, oh, wait, it's in the handout.
It's on the paper. It's on the paper we got.
1375.
Okay, Bruce.
I think we do need to review the special exception criteria, make sure...
Yes. There is, staff has done that.
Sure.
Would you read it?
Sure.
Kevin, they'll read it for us.
So the commission, this is based on the draft recommendation provided by the planning director. Commission makes the following findings and granting a special exception orderly development. The applicant is not subject to any state work associated with this application, beer and wine services customary as commercial recreation events center such as this. Property values. Property value for the site may be increased with the planned investment. Public safety, minimal impact, traffic consideration, minimal additional impact, landscaping buffers, not applicable for this application. Relationship to utility systems, drainage and impact on community facilities, not applicable to this application.
Thank you. Kevin, you okay?
Well, I would disagree on landscaping and buffers.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Including urbanized pens and dapes, so there is some landscaping and buffers involved. Just clarify that. If you're reading at all, there should be... Actually, that's what makes the decision not staff. So I would like to go over those special exceptions and make sure that the entire board of the commission agrees that, one, that it is orderly development, that I don't have any issues with property values. Yeah, I do believe that the length reads... Okay, I mean, I'm in agreement with them, other than really the landscaping one. But just in the memo, I wouldn't want it to be not applicable.
It was actually part of their presentation.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, we can change that to say addressed and appropriately meets this threshold as presented this evening.
Bruce?
Hold it. What was it? You're suggesting some other wording for item number five?
Sure, so...
And the suggestion was?
Meets, uh...
Needs regulations?
Commissioner Gray's recommending meets regulations as presented at this meeting.
And it should also be indicated on the site plan that they present.
Right.
Mr. Chair, can I make one more recommendation for Commissioner Elliott? So for that first condition, the applicant shall submit a pop-up location plan including landscaping or including landscaping buffer to the planning department so that, to address Commissioner Batos.
Where is that?
This top one.
Oh, at the top?
Yep.
Why is that different from the draft that was distributed a couple weeks ago?
The planning director drafts these prior to the meeting. So this was created at a later point.
Yeah, it used to say prior to any, any occasion. Prior to any occasion, we're either indoor or outdoor pop-up booth.
Commissioner Elliott, this, that was changed because at the point when the staff report was written, there were concerns from the fire marshal about where the liquor was going to be served. But since that point, the applicant has worked with the fire marshal and the fire marshal's concerns have been addressed. And that's why there was a little confusion about the photos that were received because the applicant was working with the fire marshal to get us the most up-to-date information. So now we know where it's going to be, so as opposed to having to come see us prior to every event, we just would like one site plan that shows the locations where they'll have it. And so that's why this draft motion looks different than the motion you received in your drafted staff, or your staff report.
So, so that is preceded by the word subject to the following condition. So a condition is the applicant shall submit, but it doesn't say when do they submit. When do you just get it? Like, when do they submit?
Prior to, they won't receive their special exception to put on land records until we've reviewed that plan. So we have something they have to file on the land records. And I think the applicant has been very expeditious in giving things, so I could see us getting that before the week is over.
Okay.
They'll also have to have a site plan, Commissioner Elliott, to be able to get state approval. And I have to sign off on that, so I'll definitely see it when we're in the other.
Okay, the approval will say that they have to submit a site plan acceptable to staff.
And is that right here?
No.
It's that number one. My recommendation was to add after plan and associated landscaping, just to address the comments made by Commissioner Batos.
I don't see the word plan here. It says orderly development.
Just a special exception criteria.
What are you pointing at?
The, the first line on that page.
Oh, 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 I think...
Sorry about that. There's two number ones on there. That's not helpful.
Yeah, next time we need to sharpen this process a little bit because it's confusing, to say the least. But the applicant shall submit a pop-up location plan.
With associated landscaping.
With, what?
With landscaping.
Pop-up location plan with landscaping. Why would that go on the pop-up location?
Should we just say a site plan?
Because the, the alcohol service on the outside is only once a month, so it's a pop-up operation. It's my interpretation.
Okay, then under, at number five where it says landscaping and buffers, that's good to go the way it was written.
Commissioner Gray would like it to be revised to say that meets regulations.
I can't, I can't read.
Commissioner Gray requested that that be modified to say meets regulations.
And, and none of the rest of it. We just landscaping and buffers meets regulations. That's what he wants. Kevin, is that what you're looking for? Item number five, does this say landscaping?
Yeah, yeah, rather than say it was not applicable, I would say that meets the regulations because they do have...
Okay.
Their landscaping does meet the regulations, are providing.
Now, if we're all ready, I, I motion that we approve application 22-30 of Legends Hall LLC, applicant-owner. Application for a special exception pursuant to section 8.6 alcohol uses of the zoning regulations for a beer and wine permit, liquor permit, for property located at 1375 Hot Metal Street. Assessors map 105 block, 403 lot 15A, zone I-1, subject to the following conditions of approval. Item one, the applicant shall submit a pop-up location plan with landscaping to the planning department for fire marshal review and approval. The commission makes the following recommendations in granting a special exception. The orderly development of the application is not proposing any site work associated with this application. Beer and wine services, customary, commercial recreation event centers such as this. Item two, property values. The property value for the site may be increased with the planned investment. Item three, public safety, minimal impact. Item four, traffic consideration, minimal additional impact. Item five, landscaping and buffers meets regulations. Item six, relationship to utility systems, drainage systems and impact on community facilities, not applicable to this application. End of motion.
Will you entertain a change to condition one?
What?
What did you say?
The condition one, I, I don't know that it's, ignore or pop-up, is it? Because it's not popping up. We have a known service area.
But they don't, they're not there very often, so you could determine, or you could call it a pop-up.
Well, and I would say, you know, obviously you guys were aware, the site plan showing the location for the outdoor service area clearly events like as show this evening with the issues.
Okay. Did you get that?
Okay, good.
We will find out.
Okay, so you agree with that?
Yes, with the adjustment that Kevin suggested.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
I will second.
Second, if Ann wants to go on.
I want to check this out, yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Anybody have steam? Okay. You're an aye? Okay. Oh, passed the 6-0. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item of business is the application 22-23, the Simsbury Zoning Commission, applicant George McGregor, agent, for text amendment to section 2.6 of the zoning regulations to extend the cannabis moratorium. Motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. You have a second?
Oh, thought you had to read it. Second.
Second. Ann made the motion, I am. Second and then discussion.
Well, I would just reiterate that it doesn't have to be six months, that we're allowing for six months, but that we could act ahead of the six months.
Right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Proposed. Pardon? You carry 6-0. And that should be effective soon. Okay? All right, we have two more items. We have a recommendation of Jolene Benedict as a regular member of the zoning, of the design review board. Someone will make a motion to that. Point to Jolene Benedict.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jolene Benedict as a regular member of the design review board.
You have a second?
Second.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Upstayed. Passed the 6-0. And we have the zoning commission write their immediate agenda.
What question, Mr.?
Pardon?
Yes, same will be used.
Need the calendar.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question on July 3rd.
Yes.
Because that falls the day before a national holiday, I'm thinking we might want to revisit that and have a meeting later in the month?
I propose we table the regular meeting dates for next year because I think that needs to be discussed. We also discussed the possibility of having a, a meeting in September that it's not on Monday to avoid the big gap.
Yep.
So this, this regular meeting schedule doesn't adopt that either, so we have a motion to table this item.
I agree with that.
Thank you, second.
I'll second it.
Ann? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, well, I all are aiming in January.
Pardon?
Of course, something of meeting in January. You have a whole month in January without a meeting is, is a problem.
Right. I agree with that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Stand. Okay, that varies. We table that until next month, next meeting. Okay. And we have a motion to adjourn. It's the only thing left in our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We move.
I did.
Ann, second, and Ann.
Sure.
Thank you.